Okay, we're going to call the 7:00 PM regular city council meeting for January 7th, 2014. First call will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Middleton.
Here.
Council President Henderson.
Here.
Counselor Grant.
Here.
Counselor Folsom.
Here.
Counselor Butterfield.
Here.
Counselor Langer.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, approval of December 17th, 2013, city council meeting minutes, resolution 2014-001, appointing Shelley Lamb to the Cultural Arts Commission, resolution 2014-002, appointing Vicki Poppen to the Cultural Arts Commission, and resolution 2014-003, removing James Koffer from the Planning Commission. I'd like to amend our consent agenda and remove item D and place it under new business.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Now we have the consent agenda. Amended consent agenda.
I'll move, we adopt the amended consent agenda.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Presentations. Proclamation for the School Board Recognition Month. Whereas school boards create a vision for what students should know and be able to do, and whereas school boards establish clear standards in student performance, whereas school boards are accountable to the community for operating schools that support student achievement, whereas school boards create a climate that supports the philosophy that all children can learn at high levels, whereas school boards build collaborative relationships based on trust, teamwork, and shared accountability, whereas school boards are committed to continuous education and training on the issue related to achievement, and now therefore I, Sherwood Mayor Bill Middleton, do hereby declare the City of Sherwood's appreciation to the members of the school board in proclaiming this month, January 2014, to be School Board Recognition Month. I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school boards in preparing today's students for tomorrow's world. And I'll be going over and reading this proclamation at the school board monthly meeting, which is next Wednesday?
Yes.
At Middleton School. New business, city council president selection.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Henderson.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. City Recorder Performance Evaluation. We had the evaluation tonight, and we will be bringing back in two to four weeks, a memo, much the same as we did with the city manager evaluation, and at that time, we will go over it and we will have it available for public to look at, and we will, at that time, determine what we're going to do with her current contract, which we will continue and maybe make a few modifications on it. Now, I'm going to bring back resolution D, what was resolution 2014-003, removing James Koffer from the Planning Commission. I'm the one that brought that forward, and there was many reasons. Some of them were lack of attendance, some of them were the process he went about of not showing up to certain meetings that we had requested, and there was some other issues of his, the way he went to other council and discussed this issue. So, now that's all been more or less gone over, so, does anybody else have anything on this that they'd like to discuss?
I have some questions on it. As I'm reading this, it appears that attendance is an issue, but there's also, when you're on Planning Commission, because I served on Planning Commission as the liaison for a long time, and staff is amazing at sending reminders, because this is a very important commission. You make very important decisions, the voting affects everyone, it's a very, very important commission. It meets as much as council meets, and so I wanted to kind of address the issue of attendance, because I know that things can come up, and life gets in the way sometimes, so I wanted to know, because I know that when I was on as the liaison, I got multiple reminders, so it wasn't just that I knew that there was a meeting coming up, but that I got a reminder, hey, are you going to be there? Because there is an issue of quorum. It's not just that you're a member of a board, but that you're a voting member, and that in order to achieve a vote, they have to have so many members. So, what I wanted to know was, when Commissioner Koffer wasn't going to be at a meeting, did staff know that he wasn't going to be at the meeting? Was it, say, an excused absence that, you know, I'm not able to attend, for whatever reason, we're not here to judge whether a reason is good or not, but, hey, I'm not able to attend, so that you could establish the quorum, so that you were being respectful of all of the Planning Commission members and their time?
I can speak more as my, when I was planning manager, because I was more of the direct contact and the staff liaison to the Planning Commission. The communication regarding attendance, what, you know, yes or no, was not very often, so I know, like, this year, his attendance has not been very good. Last year, his attendance was much better, but staff never knew, or rarely knew affirmatively or negatively whether or not he would be in attendance.
Okay, and what about the other commissioners? Did you get an answer when you asked, are you going to be there, are you not going to be there?
Yes, it was certainly more consistent with the other commissioners.
Okay. And I have another question, I'm sorry. When Commissioner Koffer applied for the position of planner, or planning commissioner, did we have lots of applications from lots of people?
Lots is relative. I believe we had four applications at the time, which is pretty standard. Four to five is kind of the standard lately. We've had a little bit more interest in Planning Commission, so we've had more with the most recent appointments, but...
So you turned away people who wanted to be on planning?
Yes.
What I'm going to do on this, is what I'd like to do, is amend a table to a date not certain, so he will be able to show that he is interested in the position, is willing to continue forward, and wants to remain on the Planning Commission. Do I need a motion for that? I need a motion.
So your motion is to table this agenda item to a date not certain?
Correct.
Second? Take a vote?
Well, we haven't had a...
Mayor?
What?
You want to call for a vote?
Yeah, I am. Yeah.
Before we do that...
That's right, I didn't know if, he looked like he wanted to say something.
I just want to ask a question. The purpose of delaying this would be to evaluate whether he's showing up...
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all it is, and if it works out, then it never comes up again, so...
Can I ask you a question before we vote? With regard to his attendance, wasn't there something about a back surgery during this year that caused some of that?
The mayor and Council President Henderson and I met with him last week, or the week before, and that was certainly brought up, I guess, to Counselor Clark's questions. I don't know how much was communicated about attendance, but again, I'm not the staff liaison now, so I honestly can't tell you whether or not, you know, he conveyed the reasons, but that's my understanding, is that he had had some back surgery this year.
And we needed that communicated to us, because part of the issue that came up was we had a meeting two weeks ago, where we had...
December 10th.
Yeah, December 10th, when we had five staff from the county here on a major, major project for the city, and he said he would be here, because we had excused a few others who had other issues, and he didn't show up, and that was the big problem, and so, if he would have called us, notified us, that's all we're asking from any commissioner, they're always, everybody's going to miss, I believe he was at 48 percent missed last time, something in that nature.
I think 40 is my recollection.
Forty percent of missed meetings, so it's a communication. If he just tells us he can't make it, we had another person that said, oh, I would have been there, so it put us on the spot, and it, we just didn't know if he was going to come, or if he wanted to come to any more, so that was it. So, that was the main justification for this, so... Any more questions? Had that moved and seconded? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Down to citizen comments. I have two papers here. Okay, first one would be Jim Claus. Oh, yeah.
(inaudible) 222, Southwest Pacific Highway. First, I thank the recent comments in the paper, particularly those people that object to political science. That's objecting to viewpoint political speech, and it's one thing the court has agreed on is a civil rights violation. I love you can have illegal signs on a council property, have preference, go to a property that has a landowner out, and we don't bring that up. But that's fine, that's handled. Now, the next thing, in my opinion and belief, I'm going to tell you something during my time, what you did is you created the staff that overspent your budget, then Hitchcock stupidly created Urban Renewal, and then you started using it as pig day. That's my opinion and belief. In order to keep doing that, the citizens couldn't know about it, because you just didn't screw up with the money you built a high-cost city, where we weren't supposed to charge state fees, stormwater fees, you're not living on it. Water that was supposedly the cheapest in the valley and now it's gone through the sea is ridiculous. But in order to do that, what you had to accomplish was shutting down public input. That's your attack on political speech, because you don't want to do that. You closed off public input. You've always brought an armed policeman in the room. That's miraculous. In an American city, we have an armed policeman. Incidentally, one of the policemen gave me a counsel a ride home. Now, message is getting real clear. We have a contract city attorney, we don't have a city attorney. And all of a sudden, you're smiling about this, because when you get the deposition on me, there'll be half a fight, and we're close to getting where we want to get, especially with you, by the way. But this is only your time limit. Everything you've done has been to suppress information in order to fund Urban Renewal in order to cut your budget. And then you've phoned the rules. You've had discriminatory enforcement of the code. Where there was no issue, you would go after someone. Where there is huge issues, you ignore them. State's starting to document them. Now that Pat Allen isn't in a position of blundering, let's make no mistake, Allen was Now, you make a leave to the sheriff, as you did, Bill, but you don't fill out a police report, as I did, because a false police report is a felony, right, Mayor? I filled out a police report, but here's the point. We have a councilman that supposedly has some police reports filled out on him, another one caught stealing political speech, and nothing's happening about this. My point to you people is now very simple. It is only a matter of time, your behavior, the gun, the thoughts, the stealing, the attack on viewpoint speech, is going to get someone to use self-help. Now, what happened with me, because most cowards never attack anybody who can play back, with the attack on women that are reasonably afraid, old people, et cetera, but sooner or later, you're going to provoke an attack on somebody. It's not just going to be a sole matter, which has been observed already by the sheriff department. I have an emergency number to call, and if I get that treatment again, but sooner or later, that's what you're bringing me to. Let me tell you something. Maybe your thing in Urban Renewal wasn't a bad idea. I think it was. I think you stole its children's money, but I'll tell you what's a worse idea. Not allowing information for the public to look at it, and then using totalitarian tactics to shut down discussion, and that's exactly what you're doing. You don't hesitate with vandalism, threats, anything.
Thank you, Jim.
Everyone is here to blame for it. You're welcome, Mayor.
Susan Claus.
Susan Claus, is this microphone still on?
Is the button up?
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, so none of what he said was on, on the record?
Hopefully, okay.
Susan Claus, 222-111, Southwest Pacific Highway. I'm just here as a follow-up on the matter of the e-sheets. Last time I was here, I asked the council about looking into it, and I haven't heard anything, neither Jim nor I have heard anything back about the problem with the e-sheets. You know, this is as simple as the idea of mail-in ballots. You know, we've been doing it in Oregon for a long time, and we still are out there with a city opinion that was driven by a staff member and the contract attorneys, and it's a city council decision, and I haven't heard anything. One of the things that we asked for the city recorder to do was to provide whatever back-and-forth communication had gone on that arrived at that decision, and there hasn't even been a reply to that email, so I don't know where we go in this process. I don't know if the question wasn't asked correctly, if, you know, there's just no response whatsoever. So, the questions that are still out there is, how did we arrive at that decision? Who arrived? Well, we answered the, who was answered, which is, it was the staff attorney, staff contract attorneys, Barry Elsner and Hammond, it was Paul Elsner and Sylvia, were the two that arrived at that interpretation, which presupposed that it required two people on those e-sheets for signature, which is not what the state says, or what the county, they've accepted e-sheets. So, is there any way, counsel, that, I mean, are you going to make this decision, or are you going to leave it with the way the staff has interpreted this part of our voting code? And what's the status of being able to get that documentation for whatever that information that was, went on between the staff and the city recorder? I can't imagine that it would be attorney-client privilege, because this is a voting question, and this is a public policy decision, it doesn't, but we just don't have any information whatsoever. So, I'm back here again, trying to get some resolution.
It slipped my mind, and, but I, what we'll do is, in our meeting on Monday, we'll discuss it, and we'll, staff will get back with you on it.
Mayor, if you like, I can provide a partial...
Oh, go ahead, sure.
...a partial response to Susan. Susan, was there any other comments that you wanted to use of your time, or do you want me to go ahead and respond now?
Oh, go ahead, I mean, I may have some comments.
Okay. So, basically, I did check with the state, and the state and the county. The state has a process for processing e-sheets, as Susan has explained, and has, as I have explained to the council, what that process is of an e-sheet. The county does not have a process in place. As of 2013, December of 2013, there was not a process in place. There was not a county in the state of Oregon that processed e-sheets. When I inquired with Washington County Elections Officer, she polled the elections officers of the counties across the state, and those are the records I will provide to Susan when I get to the other records requests that I'm working on. So basically, those counties indicated that they do not have a process in place, that the state has not established a process at the jurisdiction level. 2014 manuals have now come out by the state, and in those manuals, there indicates a form that cities can use for that process. So, this is brand-new, January 2014, the e-sheet process. The hurdle that we are up against here in Sherwood is, the code indicates language, which is Susan's argument, which is my interpretation, this was not the interpretation provided by legal, it was mine, that a circulator and a signer are two different individuals. So this is the argument, that the person signing the e-sheet can, in Susan's interpretation, can also be the person that witnesses their own signature. The code indicates language of a circulator and a signer. To me, that interpretation is two different individuals. So, if the council chooses to accept an e-sheet process for the city, as the state has at the state level, then it would require an amendment to the code, I would recommend an amendment to the code, to clarify that process.
Okay, I have a reaction to that.
May I clarify something?
Sure.
So, does our current code stipulate that the petition circulator must witness the signer of their sheet?
Our code indicates that the circulator, yes...
Hater unpaid.
The circulator, yes, must witness the signing of that sheet.
Okay. Go ahead, Susan.
And just to clarify too, I believe I saw you copy that reply. I've seen that response.
I've included the council on all the responses to the clauses, so the information the clauses have, the council also has those responses.
Okay. That's including any information where you've talked back and forth with the contract attorney?
I have not communicated with the contract attorney. The interpretation of the code was solely my interpretation.
Okay, because you said it was in conjunction with the contract attorney.
I have spoken to the contract attorney, I don't have emails.
Okay, so here's my point, okay? She's a staff member, that's fine, she doesn't really have the background to make an interpretation, it didn't say it was two separate people. The state has accepted, if you talk about the motor law, where you had, anyway, they have precedent, that they have accepted these e-sheets, where the person who is the signer on the petition is also the circulator. Instead of having 10 signatures on a sheet, it's one signature. They sign as the signer on there, and they sign also as the circulator. They send that in, and that goes to the chief petitioner, and then it goes through the process where those signatures are then put in front of the county, in our case, and they verify the signatures. To stop this process, when it's a time-sensitive process, this has been going on since November, and there's a 90-day deadline on two of the petitions, it's effectively thwarted that. So, my point is that you have to stretch to say that's two separate people, and we in the city, I mean, the whole thing with the Walmart at the Court of Appeals, is, we said, it doesn't matter what our local interpretation is of notice, the state rules, and it's only 150 feet, or 100 feet, whatever it is, and we argued that in front of the Court of Appeals. Now, what we're arguing is, even though the state has allowed e-sheets, we at the local level have let a staff member, unelected, not even somebody that we can have a discussion with, who now she's even saying that she did not even, that this wasn't the contract attorneys, this was solely her.
Okay. I understand what you're saying on this, but I think that, from my point of view, and I don't know about the rest of the council, this is such a new process, that we really have to have a work session of some kind on this, so we can sit down and make a decision if we are going to amend the code, but it would have to be something, you're talking about bringing it to the council, so we need to sit down as a council and discuss...
Okay, I understand that, but I don't even think you need to amend the code. This is a code interpretation, and you have the right to interpret our codes, in fact, you have the responsibility. And so what I'm saying is, I mean, I understand that Sylvia says, okay, we need an amendment to the code. No, it's your interpretation, and I understand that it's a kind of an awkward position that she's in, but please, without going through a text amendment process and all of that, you guys can sit there and say, it doesn't have to be two people, it doesn't say two people.
Okay, but what we're going to do is, we'll sit down as a council and talk about it, and look at the code and make the determination there. I don't have the code in front of me, I don't even have an e-sheet in front of me, so I think, I don't know about the rest of the council, but I need a little more education on it before, and so we can make a decision at a little work session.
Okay, so in the meantime, though, we haven't been, we have not been able to have the e-sheets.
But the clarification is that no county jurisdiction...
It's just...
Yeah, the state has been using them, but no county in Oregon is using e-sheets.
You know what, but I talk directly, pardon me, but I talk directly to the county, and they accept them, so, you know, again...
Okay. We'll have a small little session on this, and we'll get back with you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So to clarify, Counselor Folsom, the counties can accept an e-sheet process as the state accepts an e-sheet process. The issue, as you will see with the emails that I share with you from the other county elections official, is a process at a local jurisdiction level has not been established. That process was established in January of 2014, and the manuals that were just newly produced, prior to two weeks ago, prior to a week ago, those forms did not exist for local jurisdictions to use. They now do exist. So it's just, it's a brand-new process.
Okay. Thank you.
And I respectfully disagree on some of that.
Okay, but let us, and we'll get back with you on it.
There was a way to make it happen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eugene Stewart.
Eugene Stewart, Bill Box 534, property owner of Finn City. My concern is, I was sitting up at the senior center about a week ago, and looked out the window, and one of the gutters was leaking, and it wasn't really raining. Went out and looked, and it's where the seam come together, it corroded or washed away, but then when you looked down, it looked like the water had been running back towards the building, and possibly that some of the water was wicking back up into the wood. Also, when you look at the concrete patios, some of them have bored battings between the slabs. Those need to be repaired, they're all rotten. It's my understanding, the seniors don't like to walk out on the patios because of the unevenness. Some of the slabs are starting to tilt a little bit, which just happens over time. But my question is, is that it seems like we don't have a good procedure to maintain our buildings, and our possibly other structures too, and then when you hear the mayor say that he doesn't know where the $40,000 a mile for maintenance of a new trail is coming from, do we have good policies and procedures in place, so that we know all our city property is properly maintained, before we go off spending a bunch of money on new stuff that's also going to require maintenance? How well are we, how do we grade ourselves, and how well we're keeping our buildings up? Do we wait till the roof leaks before we fix it? That becomes very costly, just as a scenario, but is there a timeframe that you have for all your buildings on when the roofs, say, the roofs need to be repaired, replaced? Or do you, there again, like I say, do you wait till they start leaking, and then you've got a much costlier repair? It just seems like we need a better city policy on how we take care of our property. Also, the five acres next to it, city made a good start on getting the blackberries, but they, about a third of them are still there, still growing. Are we waiting till the trail system goes down through there to clean it up, or why can't we, you know, blackberries, you say, is an invasive species, it's on the city property, but yet, we have no funds to take care of it. Also, on that same property, there's a lot of ivy around there too, which is another invasive species. So, how are we going to attack that? Do we need to look at setting up maybe volunteers to go in and help you maintain some of this property? But we need to get a program so that we don't get so far behind. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll, staff will get back with you on that, Jane. That's the last form I have, so now it would be council announcements. Go ahead.
Friday at 4 o'clock, out here at the Cannery site, we will be having a groundbreaking for the cultural center, and it will...
We'll have tents, too.
And we'll have tents. Thanks, Mayor. Very exciting day, so I wanted to invite everyone. It should be really fun.
There'll be cake.
Possibly what? There will be cake?
There will be cake. There will be cake.
There will be cake! So very excited for that process to start. Thanks.
No.
I've just got a general comment, and that is, I'm a citizen of this city. I too get to enjoy free speech, and frankly, I'm not going to take some of the citizen comments that have been coming up here and aimed at me, or aimed at another councillor. So I'm just letting you know now, I'm going to exercise my free speech. So next time it happens, don't be surprised if I have something to say.
Anybody? Council President Henderson.
I just have one comment. I don't think we've brought this up previously. We have talked about it at the Budget Committee, which is, of course, the council and seven members of the public. And there's, you know, a lot of generalization about how the budget is spent, or maintained, or what oversight is, and the one thing that happened, you know, people are often quick to criticize and rare to praise, but last budget cycle, we go from a July 1 to June 30 budget cycle. So for our budget from 2012 to 2013, which of course ended June 30 of 2013, one staff had done all of the accounting and reconciliation, we had an additional $970,000 in our general fund contingency. A couple of years ago, the Budget Committee worked closely with our staff to develop budget goals, and one of the goals was to have no less than twenty percent in our general fund contingency. Some people like to call it a rainy day fund, it's not really a rainy day fund, because that term doesn't really exist, but it's a contingency that we leave for emergencies, unplanned, you know, issues in infrastructure, roads, and...
Pardon? Building maintenance.
Yeah, building maintenance could possibly fall in that category. And so the statement that we have a staff that overspends our budget, how can we have an extra million dollars in our general fund contingency if we have a staff that overspends our budget? We are not rich by any means, but I think that we, as a municipality and a community, have weathered the recession pretty well compared to other municipalities of our size, and that, in no doubt, is a testament to our staff. And so our general fund contingency right now is thirty-one percent. So that's eleven percent higher than the target we have for the Budget Committee. And that's a very envious place to be in, and we have not decided, the council has not decided, you know, how we will utilize that money, whether we'll save it, or we have accomplished a few projects. One of the projects that the mayor wanted to get done was Murdoch Park, and a replacement of the play structure, and that will be moving forward. But I just wanted to give some data that can be backed up with actual numbers. It's not a subjective statement, but an objective statement, and I want to thank staff for their continued hard work. We, of course, will be moving into a new budget cycle for 2013, 2000, I mean, 2014, 2015, and we know that we'll have potentially tough decisions to make. But we are in a much better place than some other municipalities of our size. And it's, I think it's good to see that other communities are recovering and doing better, and I hope that that continues for, you know, everybody in our state. So I just wanted to bring that up, that we're doing pretty well in our budget process, and I want to thank staff and congratulate staff for every idea, every avenue they took that helped save money. So...
Anyone else?
And just a reminder for Friday at four o'clock.
Commander Port.
The only other item for mayor and council and the public, on Wednesday, there will be a ribbon-cutting at Canary Row Apartments at 4:00 PM. I don't know if there'll be cake, but certainly an opportunity to, if you've not seen the new apartments that are in our urban renewal district, that's an opportunity, four o'clock on Wednesday.
Is that in the lobby over there?
It is in the lobby, Mayor.
So it's not low-income housing?
Uh, no.
That's tomorrow?
It is tomorrow, 4:00 PM. It's a private, it's not a city ribbon-cutting, capstone, and the folks that...
It's not a chamber event?
It's not a chamber event. I mean, there'll be chamber members there, so. That's all I had tonight.
Okay, seeing nothing else, we'll adjourn to the URA Board Meeting.